Let me lead this to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every freedom and justice for all.
Introduction to those present.
So online, we have John Malcolm, Jennifer, Julie Mack, and Harry. And Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Rich Hewlett, and Jessica Van Orte. And I'm Kristin Powers. And we have Russell Glover, Harley Cudney, Nancy Morleone, and Deb Hawkins. A couple of additions. Is that where we're at? Yes. So just under road foreman's report, there's the MRGP, the Municipal Roads Grant Program. There's a renewal that needs to happen by the 26th, which I think Julie might have taken care of, but I just wanted to make sure we talked about that. And then some updates on where we're at with grant projects and funding, and then questions about grants for next year. And then for facilities report, Sue Laporte had sent me an email last week, I think it was, about some buildings, projects, some updates that might need doing. And then also wanted to talk about the municipal building energy resiliency funding, which we can talk about there. And I feel like there are other, there might be a couple other things, but I'll just bring them up as they come along.
In old business, I have a little question slash update about the pedestrian grant project. I've had a couple emails about that. The one for the sidewalks.
And we, do you still want to do executive session tonight to talk about labor relations agreements?
What do you think?
You were here last week, right, or the last time? So I think we can keep it short.
Yeah, okay. So then no deletions. So the previous meeting minutes that need approval is January 10th. So something that I just picked up tonight, it's like quick moment of panic, the heading was wrong. It said draft minutes from the 27th, so I fixed that. And then I really impressively spelled Towsley Hill incorrectly on the road foreman's report. I was like too sleigh or something, so I fixed that. So I made those two edits. And that's it.
Have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Any announcements?
Don't think so.
Zoning Administrator? Good evening.
Good evening. So I have the new computer. We now have the zoning NEMERIC module loaded up and in the office. I have training scheduled tomorrow to figure out how to do it, but we did a demo yesterday. And what we'll be able to do is to scan all of the documents associated with a permit, link them to the permit in the system. So we will have a permanent backup in the event anything should ever happen to that office. It'll also allow us to recall them, and the assessor can also recall any of the permits. What else do we have? I was hoping to get the new permit format approved, but we didn't have a meeting of the planning commission last night. So I believe it has to go through the planning commission before it comes to you folks for sign off. So once I have it through the planning commission, I hopefully will email out a draft to all of you to review product in the meeting. But do you need a 30-day time period before you can vote on it or not?
I don't think so. That's
It seemed like the last time that Eric wanted to make changes, quite a few years ago, we did some changes. We just
Yeah, those time periods usually are just for updates to the town plan or the bylaws.
Okay. I didn't know if permits fell into that, but the major changes to this is we had mentioned before was the addition of the 911 address. And they're just a little bit more specific. And it's the owners back on the property owner to provide more detail. And then the other question that's come up is, we don't have a permitting process for signage, and I don't know if that's something we want to entertain someplace along the line. And the other issue that we had when the fellow came yesterday for to hook me up, he noticed that our Wi-Fi is unsecure. And he's not happy about it here in the office. And he said that we should either secure the one that's here, given that there is a hotspot outside that the public can use, or if we want an available Wi-Fi in the office here, then we should have one for the office and then a guest Wi-Fi. So I spoke, Julie was gonna also join in tonight to say that she supports that, because the way it is now, it's just an open system.
I would assume, probably Deb, you could answer this. Probably some of the people that come in end up using their own phones with the Wi-Fi or their computers to do work, so we probably need one, a public access inside and your own private ones for you guys, right?
It's come up in the past, and I don't remember which board was serving at the time, but it was decided that it was a public building, public everything, we should have public Wi-Fi. But Vinny's not the first IT person that has expressed concern about that. So I think it would be advantageous to do a public Wi-Fi and then a secure Wi-Fi.
I agree 100% with that.
The only thing too, though, when we put the public Wi-Fi here, I don't believe the hotspot was set up at the library.
Yeah, there is a hotspot.
And you can't pull the hotspot. I mean, I don't know if you can see right now.
It's not, yeah, but it's not always great.
Okay, yeah. All right, then my suggestion is that maybe we put a guest Wi-Fi here too. And have one for
Yeah, I would think, because I'm sure that the researchers are
They need to use their own phone.
Would use the Wi-Fi when they're in here, et cetera, stuff like that.
And that's all I have.
So who do we, so someone should reach out to Vinny, right?
He'll be here tomorrow, we can talk soon.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions for Nancy? Okay, thank you Nancy. Planning Commission, that was canceled last night.
It was canceled, yeah. I'll just say like one small thing, which is that I have met with Ed Boe from Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and he and I, we had separate documents that we had to merge together, and we do now have what's basically a draft of a bylaw update based on this grant we have, the municipal planning grant. So next time the planning commission meets, we will be going over that draft. The updates are largely to make it easier for people to build things on their lots. Like dealing with setbacks and dimensional stuff, that's primarily what it is. But yeah, we had to cancel last night due to the weather, and also due to the fact that nobody except me on the planning commission knows how to run Zoom. And I was out of town. So that may be something we need to resolve.
Road Foreman's report, what's going on?
I have a report to share. So the turbo has been repaired in the greater, and they're scheduling for bushing repairs for the lift arms in the greater, which I now know what those are. Winter maintenance is ongoing, and for every time that we go out and perform winter maintenance, it seems like the highway department then has to spend about a day to make repairs and just make sure everything's up to snuff. The new uniforms are here, I got to see those, and they're very nice. The guys are, they are, they're quite nice, reflective, professional, check all the boxes. They are keeping salt in stock and also moving gravel when there's time. There is still currently no working four-wheel drive in the Dodge, and they're waiting for parts to come in. We're thinking it's the Selenoid, but to be determined. And the Markowskis have done a great job on the 153 stabilization project. The banks on both sides have been filled in, and the highway department is hoping that they might be able to come back to complete a few additional tasks to round off that project, depending on where we're at with budget.
We're intact, so we got it all done for the money we got, huh?
And they will be back to finish the right-of-way for the Williams pit there, and also a road so we can get up on top and melt the sand. So, and tidy up the yard and make sure the berms are all where they're supposed to be.
I didn't notice it when I go by, that looked great. It's
Yeah, they did an excellent job.
It went really quick. That's super.
And then other than that, so we are, the grants and aid, I think the Kelly Hill Road Grant, that was due the end of December, and that was something that I missed. I knew that the deadline was coming up, but I got an email that, we are one of probably 70 towns that has not yet submitted their grant reimbursement paperwork. So Dale went ahead and got all of the information that Keith always traditionally got for me, which is like all the labor hours, all the equipment hours. He put together a list of all the different bills that he expected we would need to gather. So I know that Julie's also been working on gathering the bills. So now that I have all of that information from Dale, I'm gonna come in and meet with Julie, and we'll try to get all of that wrapped up and submitted, so we'll get reimbursement for that. And I believe that was like a $12,100 grant that we should be seeing. And then once I hear word and we get a bill and everything from the 153 project, we'll be able to submit for reimbursement for that, which is great. And then Julie is curious about what we are anticipating for grants coming up in this fiscal year. If there's anything that we are planning on applying for, so that
Be a paving one.
There should be a paving one. So So I can also kind of look into that and see what I've been getting.
All the structures in town have been upgraded, right?
There may be one or two box culverts left to do, but the majority of them have been completed.
Not, not all to current standards, but they've all been upgraded. Because some of them were upgraded before Irene, and then they changed all the standards after Irene. But they're all in good, pretty much everything in our roads are in good condition.
Don't we pretty much every year get that grant, I forget its name, but the one for the hydrologically connected roads? So that's the grants and aid?
Yeah, the grants and aid.
So yeah, we'll be doing that too. And that's what, or we should apply for that anyway.
I remember looking at the map of it, and so many of our roads are hydrologically connected.
Yeah, and the nice thing about that is that Stephanie B., I don't want to butcher her last name, but she's really good at that, and so I can reach out to her and ask for some help on figuring out, you know, where we might be with that. And they have a whole list of roads that they think that we should prioritize too, so we can get an idea of that. But so Julie, I will, I'll look into that more too, and get you a list.
Thank you. I was looking to have some information for putting in the town report final budget. Of any, if we have a project that we have budgeted for and a grant that would go against that project.
I'm not confident enough to answer you right now.
I don't, I don't believe we have discussed any projects that we have earmarked grants for, do you?
No, not up to this year.
Well, like, I think you have, I think you have a paving budget, so if you have a paving budget and you have a grant that you think you'll get to go towards it?
Yeah, that's what we're
Or if the grant age is something like that's going to cover one of our traditional, like, however many miles per year?
Yeah, well, the grants and aid will cover, you know, our, like what Jessica was saying, the hydrologically connected roadways. So that'll, hopefully if we get that, that'll be an ongoing project to help improve those types of roads that we have. And then we can just figure out what we're thinking, wasn't it? Isn't it? Which road are we thinking about paving?
153.
153 is the hopeful, the road that hopes to be paved. We'll get together. Talk about it.
That's the next one on our, on our list.
Yeah, we went through and replaced the culverts last summer, so everything would settle.
And it would be from the village north, or?
Yeah.
That's where we, because we paved from the, last time we paved, we paved from the line north to the village, right? We ended in the village somewhere, by the monument.
And then Julie, did you do the MRGP permit renewal?
I believe it's over $600, so I need approval to put it on for the card.
Okay. So I think I forwarded this to you all the beginning of the month. So it's the MRGP, the Municipal Roads Grant Program, I believe, is what that acronym is for. And it's, we had a permit that we first got in 2018, and it expires. The towns are required to submit the attached notice of intent form along with a $640 payment by January 26th. Annual fees are now due on April 1st instead of June 1st, and the annual report form will be due on April 1st. So this is the storm water, watershed and stormwater permit for the municipal roads. So it's the permit that we had five years ago, and it needs renewal. So the notice of intent form just states, the submission of this notice of intent constitutes notice that the entity in section A, which is the town of Pollet, intends to be authorized to discharge pollutants to waters of the state under Vermont's Municipal Roads General Permit. Submission of the NOI also constitutes notice that the party identified in section A of this form has read, understands, and meets the eligibility conditions, agrees to comply with all applicable terms and conditions, and understands that continued authorization under the MRGP is contingent on maintaining eligibility for coverage. In order to be granted coverage, all information required on this form must be completed. And that's through the ANR as well. I'll print this out for us. Everybody get all that?
We could do that right now, make a motion.
Let me get that form real quick.
Sign the form. We have to sign that form as well, right?
So if we need a motion, I'll move that we authorize Julie to pay that. I don't remember the, to pay the MRGP renewal.
The notice of intent
I'll second that.
To pay for the permit. Okay. I will. Is our mailing address at the PO box, right?
Yes, 128 PO box.
So that should go to my
So it's pretty
So Jessica made the motion, and Rich seconded it.
Are you ready? Yeah. All in favor of signing the MRGP grant? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Have your blue pen. Make it all official looking, thank you.
Even has an eraser on it. I don't know if it does anything, but can try. Okay, that's good.
So do we have any more with the grants or the grants updates? Or we're pretty well covered, covered that territory?
Yeah, I think so.
Do we have anything from the assessors tonight? Nothing? And the town clerk memo? Deb, would you like to read it?
Yep. So the first thing is, I'm assuming we're having town meeting at the Lee Community School. So there's a reservation form that needs to be signed for that. Kristin has it. The online system is back up and running, which is, which is great. It's not 100% to the satellite researchers yet, but in our offices, it's running pretty good. Bob's got the fleet excess weight permit. We're gonna sign a warning tonight, but I do have one appropriation request that came in. It was due on Thursday. It came in my email on Friday. It is Article 22. Did you guys all get the video? I sent you all a copy of the warning. Okay. Well, it was, it's currently Article 22, the Parent-Child Center of Butland County. I had reminded all of the organizations that they would do by a certain date, and they didn't get it until the next day. So I told them that they would likely not be on the ballot, unfortunately, but that I would pose the question to you as the board. They are, they are appropriation that has been approved for many, many years. It is, I think it's $300? So anyway, whatever, yeah, it's $300, so whatever you decide, it can come off very easily, or I can leave it on very easily. Their email, the email came in. I checked the email from home just to make sure that nothing had come in on Thursday, and it was definitely on Friday, Monday, Wednesday.
Does everybody feel that they want?
It'd be fine to leave it on.
Yeah, I can stop you.
So we'll just, we'll just make that a motion. Rich and Jessica made a motion that we leave it on. All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? So we can leave that on.
So with regard to the warning, the only other question that I have that we change the structure of the warning as I have it typed right now, is whether you're going to have a Zoom feature with the meeting.
Having a hybrid type meeting with the Zoom and the
Right.
I think that that's a good thing.
I think we should, if we can do it logistically.
Okay.
If we need to get extra help to do it logistically and not just make Kristin do it, I think we should get extra help.
Yeah, I just don't know how we're gonna pull that off smoothly.
Frank does.
Okay, hold on.
Just like this?
I just wait, hold on.
Just like this, except for you have, if anybody
Kristin's talking.
Because it's not just like this. So town meeting is facilitated by John Thrasher. And what happens every year is that John needs to be able to determine who speaks. He calls on people, everybody directs things to him. So John needs to be able to see the screen. It just, I think we just, I mean, yeah, we just need to think it through.
We may need an additional person whose job is to look at the screen, and if someone has their hand up, to let John Thrasher know, so that he can look at the in-person audience, and then someone can maybe alert him if there is a digital audience.
Which that could be me, because Deb takes the minutes, and John is the host. So
Okay, so we also have to make sure that the school, because we have lots of things to plug in then, right?
So just be, so it'd be the owl, and it'd be a computer. The screen, I have a nice update about that. We're not gonna be able to take that screen to the school safely, I don't think, unless somebody else feels confident about transporting a 70-inch TV on a stand. I think it's really great, it's a great way to continue to get people involved, and I think it's, that's wonderful.
It's logistics that we have to figure out.
Yeah, it's just, we just need to make sure that it's not going to be a technological nightmare.
Is there a screen at school, I wonder, that we could use?
So there might be a projector, which would be kind of cool, like if there was a way that we could plug the computer in to a projector, so that people could see who is speaking on Zoom. Although that doesn't always matter, because most of the time, people don't have their face on the screen anyway.
We're also, we, now that everyone gets acknowledged before they speak anyway, so
Yeah.
I think that it's a benefit to the community to allow that option. We always have some people attending even the SLAC board meetings on Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And there's been a lot of times that I've been at a SLAC board meeting, that there's maybe been one person here.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think that we will probably have our own, we might even have members of our own board that will attend.
I see Julie also has her hands out there.
Yeah, so we have a couple hands.
Frank?
There's two ways to go about, John Thrasher moderating, obviously, you get to, they run around with a microphone. There is a possibility, I went on the Owl site and whole thing, and you could, you can have a microphone input that would, it could be a mobile microphone, all right? Or you can have a station somewhere visible close to the owl, where some people have to come up and pose their question at the station. So that's it. The screen stuff you can do all day long, it's just getting the screen The screen stuff you can do all day long, it's just getting the screen there, projector or something, that's not a real big hurdle. But it's just how you wanna handle the question and answer stuff.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try and work through details and see if, maybe, maybe we need to talk to Vinnie and see what he. Maybe he can pull, make sure that we have enough things together. Somebody?
Julie has her hand raised.
Oh, Julie?
I actually was gonna say that I think that this could actually be efficient and a lot lo, more low-tech than you're thinking. As long as there is a screen and someone watching it that can notify John Thrasher when someone has a question. He often repeats back questions for the whole audience to hear when someone either mumbles or doesn't wanna use the microphone and he doesn't feel like everyone has the ability to hear. So I really think that this could be as simple as having one computer screen that people at home can zoom into with someone else besides John watching.
Thank you. Harley?
Running, connecting everything, running through the day before with a live Zoom connection and some compatriot off-site who zooms in the day before, not an hour before, I think is a little.
What fun is that?
A dress rehearsal.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree with Harley.
Absolutely, that, that makes, that makes very good sense.
After school, let's have it three that day and, you know, people are still around.
It'd be a Sunday debate before.
So how long do you think it'll take you, Harley? Are you, are you gonna need help?
Sunday, we can go.
Sunday, the school, I wasn't thinking, it would be kinda inconvenient for them, but Friday?
Yeah.
Friday afternoons are actually pretty good because they're doing JIS now, so the kids are gone.
Well, I will look forward to being at the school on Friday afternoon to do a Zoom run-through.
And finding out beforehand, they probably have flat-screen TVs, so that, that's probably available. I didn't realize this was 70-inch and I do wanna point out, it's not hooked up yet and the Super Bowl is just a matter of weeks ago.
You could do a drag run in the Super Bowl.
So, okay, so for the sake of the warning, which is what we need to sign tonight, I need to add the Zoom credentials.
The hy, hybrid meeting, yep, with the Zoom connections. We're gonna do our best to make it work.
Which will be the same link?
As last year.
As, as every select board meeting and?
So I'll just pop, I'll just pull it off and flash.
I can send you an email tonight.
Okay, cause I'm gonna go right in right now.
And do it.
As, as far as the numbers go, are you guys all in agreement with the general fund, the highway budget? The, of course, the, um, there's four organizations that are asking for their tax exempt status this year, which comes up every five years. All of the appropriations and then your portion, which is the budgets and capital budget funding, the wastewater or whatever you guys are calling that. The upgrading maintenance for the wastewater, you put in a $15,000 for that and, oh, and $8,000 for the townwide reappraisal. All those numbers are agreeable to you or do you need me to read them?
I looked it over the other day.
Okay, so you were happy enough with everything?
They looked like what we'd agreed on.
Everything seemed to be in order. I didn't, I didn't remember all the budgetary numbers, but I'm sure that those were correct.
Okay, um, I sent it to Julie too.
Right.
So I'll go in and make those changes and then I'll bring it back out for you guys to sign. And I will take it to John personally, probably tomorrow.
So we have, do you have the warrant for us to sign then?
After I make those changes.
Okay.
I'll have the hybrid part of it and I'll bring it back out. John Thrasher actually was here today and signed the back page, which I will try to keep that intact. Otherwise, I'd have to hunt him down and get him to sign it as well.
Okay.
Does any, before I go in there, does anybody have any questions or comments?
I think we're all set, other than that, thank you.
Okay, I'll be right back. And you're sending that?
Town Thrasher.
I just did.
Hi, this is Julie. Not a lot tonight, just the, the two warrants. Payroll was $8,679.39. Amount payable, $32,546.47. Uh, general fund monies, $15,490.17. Highway, $17,236.36. Wastewater, $84.99.33. I feel like I should have something more to say because I feel like I've been busy, but I think it's just tax payments steadily coming in and just general, um, end of the calendar year stuff. So nothing new and exciting.
Okay. That sounds good.
I'll go ahead and move that we approved these two warrants, 23042 and 23043.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion about the warrants? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carrie? Thank you. And these, or to share these letters from Madja, or to share, Julie or?
This is Julie. Yes, he, he sends enough for, for all the board members to have one and for me to have one. But I usually keep two because I keep one in my office and then I file one in a vault and usually you guys don't care to keep them for forever. So, um, I just left the remainder on the desk for you to share. I also have it electronically, should you choose that, I have the email of it.
I'll put one back, John, if you want to pick it up or shoot to pick it up or something. I'll put it in the, in the book for you, in the, the desk back here.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Julie? Alright, thank you, Julie.
Be back.
Emergency management, nothing, it's not the end. Health officer, nothing. Wastewater, they've been monkeying with the pump a little bit to try and figure out whether it was a, a power issue to the pump or the pump had failed, but, and I hadn't heard any of the, the end results. And other than that, it's still the same. Nothing, nothing new that I've heard of lately from, from Jill since they worked on that pump station there a few weeks ago in Sprucecombe. Facilities reports, did, did Rudd do much over here? Did they just show up for a day and then run away? Oh, wish.
They worked on the porch.
I know they tightened up that front door.
Well, I closed, yeah, I closed the door today, it definitely was harder to close.
Everybody has war wounds from that door.
That's, uh, he was, uh, he was still here when.
I didn't see any boards replaced, but I didn't know or?
I didn't see anything else, I just, definitely the door's much more.
Door works much harder, okay, well, that's, so I'm positive, so if we, uh, we can stay on them, I can get ahold of them. Did I give you his number too, Jessica or not?
No, I don't have his number.
Okay, Dave Armstrong, I'll, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, send it to me.
And, oh, Harley?
While he was here, Mr. Rudd, who was, name is?
Dave Armstrong.
Armstrong.
Dave Armstrong. Dave Armstrong, the senior, came over and looked at the library, said, oh, he has to set up scaffolding and he can repair. But it looks like the roof was repaired, so this falling ceiling is probably from water damage from before the roof was repaired. But it isn't clear to me, it seemed really loosey-goosey about when and who.
That sounds typical, unfortunately, but, uh, there's, there's several in them and then they, I know they do a lot of outdoor roofing and stuff like that. So a job inside would probably be weather, weather, so, um, actually, I could, I'll give Jessica the, the contact information. I can give you the contact information for, for young Dave who's, who is the Red Builder. He, he just got an old man helping him to keep him out of, off the streets. Oh, God.
Just making it keep going was my concern.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll write it down for you there.
So regarding this list of things from Sue, she sent them to me earlier in the fall and I admit that I looked at them and I was on shoot, cause they run the range from some major things and then stuff like the elevator, which I know normally somebody in this office has arranged for the elevator person to come in. Two things like cutting back brush over various things outside.
Right, so there's foundation on this side of the building has a small hole that an animal dug out, which needs a couple of stones mortared back in. Um, the sub-basement insulation is needed around a sewer pipe. Needs a few feet of pink fiberglass. The front porch has a few boards.
Well, that we, that we take care of.
Um, somebody needs to cut away vines and grass from the air conditioning unit on a regular basis. Air conditioning needs to be hooked up upstairs in the auditorium. Elevator light in the ceiling of the elevator needs a new ballast slash fixture. So there's a whole punch list.
Yeah.
Tyler Electric, a year ago, is going to order a part, so we might need to follow up with that. The roof should be checked for broken slate yearly, there's a hole in the ceiling that needs repair, which I think has happened. There are lighting fixtures for the auditorium on the stage with the ceiling looks so bad that we haven't put them up yet. So on and so forth. And additionally, the furnaces need to be serviced annually.
So I'm gathering that these are all things Sue used to call someone to do and now no one is doing it.
Thank you.
So I don't feel comfortable doing all those things. Do we have like a handy person who works?
Red builders.
I, I would definitely, I would call, I would call Dave and tell him because a lot of that stuff, that piddly stuff sounds like perfect job for the old man.
Yeah, as I mean, the, the, it's the stuff like the, putting the insulation on the pipe and cutting back the vines, that's stuff anybody could do.
Right.
But I know, I don't know if we have someone who normally does those things, but if we don't, we could.
We really don't and, and I mean, we've looked for somebody to work on the porch all year and he was kinda the first person that even put any effort into it and he's, he's local and I.
Could that be?
We've, we've had good luck with, with work they've done at Telescope for us and, I mean, it's reputable, I mean, it's, he didn't get here as quick as he said he would, but that seems to be typical nowadays, especially with people that have a weather dependent type business can get screwed up quick, but I would ask him about all this other little stuff that.
Yeah.
Like the vines and stuff, couldn't that be who mows our lawn out front here on the green and around the?
They just kinda mow lawns, they really do.
Not, they don't go in the?
They're not generalized landscaping.
They're not in the pruning business?
No, they just, uh, white kid, right? They, they just mow lawns.
I can come down this summer and take my loppers and prune the vines around the air conditioner.
The thing of it is, it's really not our responsibility to do this kinda stuff.
Yeah, but if nobody's gonna do it, it's.
We could hire him to do it, I know they'll, they, they would probably do that kinda stuff just as, as a package deal. We got all these little piddly things that we need done. Can you have somebody come and do it for a day, you know?
Yeah, and it would be nice to have a sort of running agreement with them.
Right.
To say that, you know, we have things that are gonna need to be done every couple months. If you just arrange to have a, have a day available every couple months to come and do just all these small maintenance things that need to be done.
And we could just send you a punch list of, of stuff and, and I think, I think actually, I, I mean, either one of us could have the conversation with him if you want, but you're, you're kinda close and if you wanted to talk to him about it, or I could, maybe the three of us could meet or something and we could talk about it, but I think if you pose that to him and just, you know, how do you feel about that and?
Well, I'm technically on facilities, so I'll, I'll get in hold of him and, and see what, and see how he feels about it.
Yep, that would be awesome.
Just send me his, send me his number.
Yep.
Do you normally call him or text him?
Uh, he does a lot of texting and.
Okay, cause I know some people depending on age don't do text.
It doesn't, it doesn't.
I'll text him, I, I like it.
The kid is what, he's your, no, he's, Dave's younger, he's four, your age, right?
Yeah.
So, so he's, he does the texting and stuff like that. His, his father's just, just can't slow down. He's, he's like, he's like seventy something, seventy-five or something like that and he just, he just wants to work every day, so. Keeps him busy.
He can clear our vines.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Oh, are we on then to the municipal building energy resilience funding?
Sure.
May I say something or ask a question?
Yes.
Um, I was just gonna suggest for some of the small jobs, Matt Levine, who's stood shoveling at both the library and the town hall. And then right up the road, for some of like the cutting of brush and things like that.
That would be, that would be perfect if, if somebody wanted to ask him about it.
Julie, can you get me his information?
While we're on facilities at your next meeting, you've, um, we'll need to do something about canceling the Schindler elevator contract.
Oh, yeah, I remember that. I just saw that from 2021, I wrote that down, it expires June 20th, 2023. So isn't that something?
And you need to notify them within like 90 days or something like that.
Yes.
In writing.
John, remember all that?
Yeah.
I remember that too, that was when I first started. Oh, Julie, can you send me the contact information for the guy who does the snow shoveling?
Yes.
John Stana?
Thank you. Alright, so the, um, this municipal building energy resilience funding is the, um, brand-new grant funding that I went to a webinar about back in early December. And it's, um, it's money, if you might recall, it's money that we can get as a town, which will not have any town match, which will be used toward upgrading old town facilities to be more energy efficient. And looking at how much we spend on the fuel oil now that that's gone up, I think this is a great thing if we could, you know, if it gets more insulated or if they install some kind of heat pump or something in certain areas, just so that, whatever it is that we pay less in heating, and that's kind of the goal. Um, so in order to be considered for this, we need to submit, a Rutland Regional Planning Commission is kind of organizing it for our area. So we need to submit a form to them about each building that we wanna have be considered. And I know when we spoke about this, we were thinking of the town hall and the library primarily as being the two buildings that might get considered. There's a whole list of things that need to go in this form and I was able with publicly available information to find out most of them. But there are a few things that I'm gonna have to find out, one of which I know I can get from Julie and the other one, um, I'll have to find out from all of you where I can get this information. But the first thing that I will need to know is, um, if we want to submit, um, the information for both the buildings, the town hall and the library, and if we do, we need to list a priority for which would be the first and the second priority for us. What do all of you think about, about that?
Which one burns more oil in the winter?
Well, I think when we were looking at the budget, I think the town, I mean, I think the library really had more money used for fuel oil, which is surprising to me because this building is much bigger.
Well, we don't use the upstairs space, so.
Yeah.
The library has that big window space.
And it is used more often. I mean, it's occupied more frequently than this building is, I think.
Then we should prioritize that.
Yes, you think?
Kinda what I'm thinking.
Library number one, okay, and there's a chance they might be able to do both. I know that our, that the town of Hollis is on the list of high priority towns because of how much, um, burden there is on folks here as far as heating. Like, because we are a part of Vermont that pays more for heating than some other parts, so. Yay, we get prioritized for that. Okay, so the information that I'm looking for, I was able to find the square footage, the construction date um, on the, on the cards that are available on the G I S. I was able to find which buildings are on the state or federal historic register. Looks to me and see, um, let me know if anybody knows if this is incorrect. Looks like both the library and the town hall are on the state historic register and the town hall's also on the national register. Neither is in a flood zone, yay. What I need to find out is, is the type and age of the heating or cooling systems and that I don't know how to find out. Does anyone know how I would find that out?
They're both. They're both hot.
Hot air.
Hot air, forced hot air, oil-fired forced hot air.
Okay, so they're both, that bit we've got.
Right.
I knew they were oil, I just didn't know if they're. Yeah, because there's not radiators.
The school is, is forced hot air, right, Harley?
I.
Or the, I mean, the library.
Yeah, but the, uh, library, yeah, don't date yourself.
No, that's, that's the only way I know what happened.
I was trying to remember if there was, if there was radiators in there when we went.
And.
Went to school there.
I can find out, I will look on the, I will find the boiler or the heating source and look, there's sometimes a little plate. Sometimes with a date on it.
Okay.
Insulation dates or something like that.
Yeah.
Then you factor a date would be.
Yeah, close enough for.
Nancy? For the town hall.
I believe, Jessica, all the information you want is right behind Bob Jones and those plans, because when the engineer redid the heating system here. I think they're all in that pile over there. I don't know if Harry's still on, but I think when the energy committee looked at this like seven or eight years ago, we were able to grab everything from.
Use those plans, okay. Yeah, and I was able to find through, um, online, through information through the historical society about when we did major repairs to the town hall, which was two thousand five, two thousand six. And it said that we upgraded the heating at that time, and the electrical system, and put in the elevator and all that stuff. So I do have that info. Um. I, um, I, we're cool, our cooling system is, do you know what the cooling system is in the library? Is it central air? Electric central air?
I think so.
Yeah, I would, I would say it's probably central air.
Here, in both, okay.
Yeah, I, I would suspect if it, that would be the only way, that would be the only way they could get cooling through is to use the same ductwork as the
Yeah.
the forced hot air.
And I know that here in the town halls, we do not yet have, the, there is no air conditioning on the second floor. Right. Um, so to, Harley will try to find out when that one was put in, and I can check these documents here for when the one here was put in. And I need, will need to get the average annual consumption and cost for the heating and electricity um, averaged over the last five years. And I know I can get that from you, Julie, right?
Yes.
Okay, I will, I will, um, message you and get hold of that information, um, probably tomorrow. I think that's it for everything that I needed on here. Yep, so it's, it's due by the end of this week, so I will get the. Yes, they messaged us last week and said we have to get it by the end of this week, so Harley, if you could look for that for me in the next couple of days for the library, that would be great, and I'll contact Julie tomorrow about these numbers. Yep, that was it that I needed for this, this grant.
Excellent. Any other discussion about the facilities report? Metawi School Board Report? Nothing. We'll sign the warrant, and then we'll move on to older unfinished.
Did you want a motion? And we have a pen, we could all sign with the same pen, and we fill it the same color.
That's. Did you, did someone, do you want to make a motion to accept the warning? Or do we need it?
To do what?
Accept that warning?
Probably.
Just to dot our i's and.
Bob will.
Okay.
Make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Which?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Carried.
Just wrote your name as job bones, and that was pretty.
Older unfinished.
Um, Jessica had something.
Um, yes, uh, more grant stuff. So I, I got contacted by Rutland Regional Planning Commission who were asking if we were going to want to have them be our, uh, what's the word for it? If we wanted them to manage the grant for us, the one for the sidewalks and the crosswalks. The one that we've been awarded for next year. And I thought we had said yes, that we want them, and I don't know why we wouldn't want them.
Mm-hmm.
They're good at it, so, um, but then they, they wondered where we were at in that process. So I went back and looked through my emails, and Peter Pochop from V Trans had emailed us in the middle of October saying that, because we had sent him back like the preliminary document saying that we would, that we would accept the grant. And then he was gonna dra- they were gonna draft the grant agreement. And in October, he'd said it would be a month, and we still, there's nothing since then, so I emailed him, and I think I CC'd you on it, Mike, and I said, hey, you know, uh, where are they at with this? And he said, well, he sent it to their contract people in December, so he's gonna find out what's going on. So we don't officially have the grant agreement yet. Not like the finalized grant agreement. I know we sent them.
Because I know we told them that we wanted, I told them that we wanted Rutland Regional to.
Yeah, but evidently Rutland Regional doesn't know that, or something, so anyhow, I told Rutland Regional that we wanted them, because I knew that we had said we did. So.
Okay, well, yeah, thanks for doing that.
So, yeah, and I, we won't be able to officially designate them as the person we want to manage the grant until after we sign the official grant agreement.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's where that's at. Peter Pochop is looking into it for us.
Okay.
From V Trans, so.
Okay, so we are still.
Yeah, we're still waiting on the finalized grant agreement from V Trans.
Okay.
So hopefully they get that done soon, because it would be nice to put out a request for proposals, you know, and then have somebody do it this coming summer, but who knows?
Yes.
Given that there's other grants from the state that we've waited over a year for a grant agreement from, I'm not holding my breath, but.
Yeah, I'm surprised that that's.
Yeah. So, so that, that's where that is.
Definitely, we want, we want the Rutland Regional to.
Yeah.
To do that, and I'm sure we, I'm sure we approved that way back.
I'm sure we did as well, so I just verified it to them that, so that they can have it on their, on their planning schedule, you know, so they know they need to dedicate personnel to it.
So was there any other old business, anybody had any? That's cropped up? Nothing? Anybody knew of any new business? Russell?
Yeah, Russell Blubber from Considerable Farm, um, on one fifty-three West Paulette. Uh, the rail trail in the Indian River across our property there, and, uh, uh, coming from our farm, there's a tributary into the Indian River, comes from the, uh, the springs, Heatherington and Drybrook and our mill pond. And it reaches the Indian River under a small bridge on the rail trail. Uh, September, I noticed some flooding out there, so I went out to take a look, and I see that there's a beaver dam being built up against the abutment of the bridge. And I called in the wildlife people and the DEC. They came by and took a look at it a few days later, and came back to the house and said, there's a, there's a dam there, and it probably needs removing, uh, but it's on Vermont, uh, V Trans property, not yours. So V Trans were contacted. And they came out probably a month later, by which time there's some nice flooding, uh, enough to be concerned about. And, um, they, uh, said they would send someone by to, with a machine to, uh, maybe remove the dam, but, um, and also a trapper who would, would come and, uh, take care of, uh, taking the beavers away. Uh. But the, uh, V Trans person said to me that, you know, that up on the bridge now, there's all these flyers been stuck to the bridge and graffiti, uh, so, um, kind of warning me that, uh, you know, people were there noticing and getting interested and, uh, writing stuff about it, but, uh, anyway. So the trapper, after about a three or four weeks, um, as I understand, uh, gave up because his traps are being removed and sprung. And now the water's starting to get pretty deep. And V Trans came by again, new people this time, and they said, we're definitely gonna take care of it. We're gonna get more trappers and stuff like that. In the meantime, you know, uh, the waters, well, last week, when there was severe rains, the waters backed up almost to the farmhouse. Uh, I had a call and a visit from John Thrasher, because the river now runs down the other side of the rail trail across our sixty-acre flat into Thrasher's, uh, land. They can't get onto the rail trail. It's now down on the Lewis, Old Lewis property, crossing that, and it's now reached the, um, depot, and it's going back into the river there through a, through a, um, car. And, um, there's been a lot of kind of activity on the, uh, internet, uh, social media trashing us as being greedy landowners for, um, wanting to have the thing cleared up. Um, the, um, I haven't responded to any of it, I haven't read any of it, um, because it seems to like hysterical, uh, but it's definitely bothering a few people. So I was kind of disappointed and surprised to hear that a member of the board here had written a letter to V Trans supporting the activists that are, um, think that they're protecting the beavers. So I wondered if that was town possible, uh, policy? I'd like to know.
I can speak to this a bit.
Well, I haven't finished. I'd like to know if it's town policy, if it was on town paper or what, or what the story was. Now, the implications from all the stuff I'm hearing is that we um, hate nature, we are greedy, we only want to grow hay. But we have three-quarters of a mile of land set aside either side of, um, Drybrook and the Indian River with filter strips. We set those up with the natural resources. They're currently flooded. At great expense, Natural Resources came in and put bushes and trees for wildlife. Flooded. Getting eaten by beavers. We set aside an area with natural resources where we delayed clipping of field to let birds, um, um, fledge. And then there's another area set aside where, uh, bobolinks were nesting. We agreed not to mow that until August. Flooded. On the other side of the Indian River, there's, um, a hundred-foot filter strip. You know, to say that we're greedy landowners and we give, give back a hundred feet, it's not true. Hundred-foot of, um, filter strips on the Indian River side. We did a project there with Natural Resources, um, eight years ago to let the river flood. And it's not near the rail trail, but where the river turns and goes out across the flat, it spreads out, there's a shallow dam and a beaver lodge on our property. Nobody's bothered to ask, you know, how many beaver dams do you have on your property? We have two. We have that one set aside, we haven't touched for eight years. And over on the New York side, we have a twenty-acre pond we haven't touched in twenty years. You know, armchair beaver watchers, they can come up and lean on the bridge and look over the side in the Indian River and see a couple of beavers, or they could be bothered to walk up and check out the, the stuff we have set aside. So, um, as I said, the rivers, I don't know how, how they're doing with the, uh, the trapping. But, and you know, and nobody came by to ask our opinion before writing any letters. Not a single person has come by. None of the beaver, beaver supporters come by. None of them know that we have two beaver lodges already. Nobody's asked our opinion. We like wildlife, you know? If it wasn't exactly where it was, the dam, it, it might have worked out. But we've got two, two beaver lodges, two beaver ponds already. Three's a lot. Three's more than anybody else, uh, that's complaining about the, uh, what's happening there. And, um, you know, this is just in the wrong place. It's where the, our stream meets the, uh, Indian River. It's, it's narrow, it's deep. They built a dam there, and the whole place is flooded. So I'd like to hear.
Jessica?
Yes, um, what happened as far as I know is that I got an email from someone who lives in West Paulette, who from what they told me in the email, they said that, um, that V Trans had come in with some large equipment and had taken out a beaver dam. And that immediately after that, the beavers started to rebuild the dam. They didn't indicate where this dam was or on whose property, only that V Trans had come in to do it, um, next to the rail trail. So I assumed it was in the right-of-way, that is, the V Trans rail trail right-of-way. And they said that V Trans had brought in some large equipment, had destroyed the dam, and that within a few weeks, the beavers had tried to rebuild the dam so that then they were bringing in some trappers to trap the beavers. Um, this person also said that um, they knew a person who creates a thing called a, what was it called? Sort of a sluice of some kind, a beaver saver or something that can be.
Beaver deceiver.
Yeah, a beaver deceiver, that's the name of it.
I would be quite happy to put one in. They didn't ask, but that's the wrong.
And I have a little more information on that as well.
Let her finish, please.
Okay, so, um, this person suggested perhaps a beaver deceiver in this location. And, and said that they enjoyed watching the beavers and were sad that the beavers might be trapped and then killed. And I agreed that perhaps a beaver deceiver might be a good idea, and wanted to make sure that V Trans knew that that was an option. I figured they probably already did, but I forwarded, so I have contacts at the V Trans rail trail people. I met with them last fall, so I know who they are. It's, um, Jackie and Bill. Bill's primarily the one who comes out and does the work, and they're like the two people at V Trans who take care of the rail trail now. Um, part of the confusion about who was doing what might have been because the rail trail was recently moved from A and R to V Trans, so. Um, so I forwarded this email to Jackie and said, hey, a person here in Paulette has this concern. Here it is. I didn't really take a side on it. I said, you know, they have an idea about this beaver deceiver. Have you thought of that? And then, um, Jackie emailed back with a fairly detailed description to me and to this concerned person about what the, things that they've done that this particular location would actually not be appropriate for a beaver deceiver. Um, V Trans has talked to the Vermont Wildlife Biologist Specialist and the various steps that they've gone through in attempting to deal with this situation. So that seemed to me to be the end of it, because this person had suggested the beaver deceiver, V Trans had written back and said, no, we can't, it wouldn't work in this location. We've used it at some other locations along the rail trail, but not at this location. And, you know, and V Trans did say to the concerned individual. And, you know, and V Trans did say to the concerned individual, because I was CC'd then in this loop. They, they said, you know, if you have more concerns, please contact us, contact us directly. I thought that was the end of it, but then a couple of weeks after that, I was CC'd in another message to this same individual saying, we're concerned about some things we're seeing on social media, which I haven't seen and don't know what they are. And, and once again reiterated, please, if you have concerns about this beaver situation, contact V Trans directly. So, I don't know if the individual who was concerned has contacted V Trans directly. Sir, I didn't know that any of this had anything to do with your land, as I didn't know where this beaver was.
Nobody's been by, they're all, all this stuff blown up on the internet. Nobody's been by the house to say, hey, you know, what, what do you guys want there? It's nearly our land. It's not quite, but if the thing moves down the river thirty feet or forty feet, it's our problem. I'm happy that V Trans is dealing with it because we couldn't get equipment along the rail trail. And the equipment that you mentioned they brought along was a mini backhoe. And this thing now has got a four-foot drop and, uh, you need to reach thirty feet out to, uh, take it away. As I said, after those rains last week or the week before, the rail trail was nearly covered, it nearly reached the top, the bridge abutments are buried in water. So I told that, I told them, that once it gets above those stones on top of the, uh, foundation and everything freezes, you might have a bigger problem.
So I guess to answer your question, um, the select board did not take a position on this or do anything other than trans, Jessica transferred information that people had come to her about to the V and R, but not to the Agency of Transportation, but did not take a stand as far as one way or the other or have any input in the...
I get that.
In the rest of it.
You understand why I was pissed, right?
Understandable, absolutely understandable, so...
Like I said, I haven't seen what's going on with the, um, social media. I, I think it's a good policy to keep out that kind of thing because it's, uh, as I say, it's, um, hysterical, uh, but we're getting trashed, so...
Understandably, I can understand why you, you come, and I'm glad you came to the source to get to the bottom of it, but I hope that your, your questions have been answered from our perspective and that we did not have anything to do with any of that.
I, I wonder if you would like to get the contact information to be able to contact V Trans directly? Or if you don't want, did, were you able to get hold of them?
We've had several meetings.
Okay, so you have spoken to them already?
Before, way before, in, uh, in, um, November.
Okay.
I've tried to leave them alone, they, they, they said it's on their property. They're gonna get some heavy machinery, which is what they need, but, um, no, I try not to bug them about it. But, I mean, you live in the neighborhood, you must have seen it.
I didn't, I have no idea that the, the beavers had dammed that, that little, that little creek down there, but for years and years I fished that, every, every spring the fishing derby was in that little, that little stretch from the rail trail up to the bottom of the pond.
Right, well, I thought I'd better do something about it, because when John Thrasher comes knocking on your door, asking what's going on.
I, I wondered, I drove by and I, John's was never wet and I wondered why that was flooded.
Well, yeah.
I, I kind of...
I hated that when I was a kid.
I look out over the, I look out over the flaps there, but I'm, I'm just kinda thinking, I'll get home.
I wondered where all that water came from, now I know.
Hopefully you'll have some results and...
Well, I'm just, um, if, if it comes up again at the, uh, board meetings, I'd be very interested in hearing if that becomes, uh, if that's brought up at all.
Thank you for coming and airing your concerns.
Thanks very much.
Have a good night.
Interesting.
Any other new business tonight?
I can picture one little beaver dug in up that dam and high water flooding out the rail trail and washing out about a half mile of rail trail and there would be no more rail trail. Because the state wouldn't want to go spend a couple million dollars to replace the rail trail that one little beaver took out. So I think priorities are getting out of whack.
It sounds, well, it sounds like V Trans has their priorities straight. I mean, they, they had a very clear list of what they're trying in what order, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're taking actions.
Good. Public comment? Frank?
Uh, I don't know if it came up, but it was, we have the second in the series, the West Paul planning hot locks on Thursday, right Jessica?
Mm-hmm.
And the first one, because you guys weren't able to attend, was a success. And I didn't know this before, but Michael dug it up, is there was a previous study the state did on that intersection in West Paulette. Came up with some proposals. And Michael showed the proposals and the little adjustments to their proposal that he did creatively. Uh, and everybody in the room agreed that that should be done. And that was to move the monument down the hill further, straighten out the intersection there, make a T, stop sign coming from by Dutchie Store, stop there, so the trucks coming up the hill will be able to make it up over and another stop sign into the T and some parks and, you know, the space that was not pavement anymore would be, you know, a memorial park type of thing, but it would only be moving maybe twenty feet of monument down the hill to execute this and also getting more corner and also be able to fix that, that drainage thing by Hosley's there at the same time. So win-win-win, everybody was all for it, so, but...
I'm sorry, I wasn't able to make it, but...
Thursday night is gonna be...
Really glad I'm a pack rat and I didn't throw that proposal out that Nelson Blanchard did all those years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I actually have a question, Mike, about that. So because 153 is a road that the town maintains, if we decided that we wanted to make an adjustment to those roads, can we do it? Or do we have to get V Trans involved?
They, I asked them about that a couple of years ago, and I don't think it was Rob, it was one of the other guys, maybe Chris Taft or something like that, says, well, they didn't really wanna get involved in fixing it for us, but I, we probably do have to have permission. It's, it's, I think he said that it's really our road, they just pay us to maintain it, it's, it's a little bit gray. Before, like, that study was done when, when, uh, the engineer for the district, they, they were much more hands-on. They had more time. Whenever we had an issue with, with pretty much any roads, he was up here at least three different times early in my career. But then he retired and other people, you know, then everything changes, but...
Because what I'm thinking is, I mean, we'll probably have to get a grant anyhow, but if we didn't have to get a grant to get the scoping study done, because the study's already been done. If we just had to get a grant to actually do the engineering and do the build, that would be less work for us. But I don't know if V Trans would let us do that. It's in tri, anyhow, just guess we'd have to ask them. Jennifer Sullivan has a hand raised.
Jennifer?
Hi, um, I just have a question about, um, is it the town that plows and sands 153 to the Rupert line?
Yes. Yes.
Um, I just, the reason that I ask is because I drive that way a lot, and my daughter's in West Rupert. Um, I, like, last week when we had snow, it did not look to me, from what I could tell, it had not been plowed at all. And I don't recall seeing any sand where as soon as I got to the Rupert line, both had been done. So I, I don't know if that means anything or if we just have a different policy as far as that goes, I'm just wondering.
The, not the storm Monday, but the storm before, I noticed that they were a little bit later getting to that blacktop than normal. But this past Monday, that was the best road I traveled all the way to Granville, was the pa, was, uh, was our roads. So it, it kind of works sometimes, it's just timing, right Rich?
Yeah, and we're short on help and also the, uh, the sand that we have is, is white in comparison to what Rupert uses. We used, uh, crushed rock out of Wallingford and it's as white as the snow. Rupert used a sand like a bank run sand, which is really dark, so, you know, I don't know. That would play a role in it as well, but I know that we're, we're short on help and, uh, you know, it's, uh, we're gonna have to deal with it until we get some more help. And there's gonna be some roads over here that don't get to until later in the day and we, we fielded those calls all last week as well. Same concerns.
Okay. I was, thank you.
And if you, if you go by the town shed in West Paulette where the green building is, where we just filled the road in, look at the face of the sand pile just to the left of the, uh, the green building and you'll see what I'm talking about with the, the material that we're putting on the roads now.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other public comment? So you, we'll end going to executive session for a little bit, okay, talk about some labor, okay? All right then, I guess we'll have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion, second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich? Bob?
Yes.
Kerry? We're going to executive session at...
Six o'clock.